I'm going to call a meeting to order. It's 1:05 PM.
That's loud today. Please stand for the pledge of belief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attendance.
Avery Phillips here.
Lisa Caladonia here.
Nancy Goulat here.
Okay, we've got, this is really getting annoying. Your cellphone's on, isn't it, Tom? All right, I'm going to shut this one off because I told her to call either one of us. This is going to keep making noise. I would like a motion to take Agenda Item 6, New Business Presentations Out of Order.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Even Plumbing? So the four presentations we have, this one's 6A. I think they've all gone before the Planning Board and they've met with CONCOM. So, we will not be doing stormwater permits per se. They're going to be handled by the Planning Board under the bylaws that were originally written. The reason why the Stormwater Committee was formed and we were issuing through the Board of Health the permits was because that enforcement wasn't taking place. But Cicavalo said that this is now what they're going to do. So, I asked these four presenters to come in just to give us a brief overview of what the project is. A plot plan showing the overall thing, but we're not going to get into discussions or a lot of information that's already been covered by planning and CONCOM. I believe there's a Planning Board meeting tonight, so you can zoom in on that if you want to hear more of the discussion, but for, right now, would you give us your name, please?
Yep, Tom Morris with Consulting Engineers.
And just, just so that everybody knows who's here. Again, Dave Phillips, he's on the CONCOM. He's also obviously on this committee. Lisa Caladonia, the Conservation Agent, Tom Ferry Highway Superintendent, and everything else that nobody does in town. And I'm Nancy Goulat, I represent the Board of Selectment. So, Tom, go ahead.
Okay, so, as you said, this has already gone through planning and conservation. It's been reviewed by Weston and Sampson. So everything is approved. And yesterday, we just went to Board of Health to get the variance for the open basin. And that was approved. So, the previous site that we had done is right here. That's already been, the storage building, it's already been permitted and it's already built. So just up slope to the south, we're proposing the same building, same layout of parking, same drainage technology, slightly different orientation, just based on the shape of the topography and how the wetland comes out. But it's a constructed stormwater wetland. And we have recharge under the pavement here for the roof. That's essentially it.
Does that, I'll call it, that section of the plant, does it have any stormwater basins there?
So this is the basin, so we have the four bay and then it's filled with basin here.
Okay. The top, right-hand corner, what's that dock area? Yeah, no, 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 come down, nope, right there.
That's a riprap spillway.
Oh, okay.
That's the emergency over there. So there's nothing designed to go over that spillway.
So this-
Comes out of the outlet pipe here.
Yeah.
That lets into that riprap. And then it goes north to the swale that was designed and built on the previous storage building that wraps around.
Okay, the building is the same size, the proposed building as the one you've got?
Exactly.
How much more land do you own going south?
I'm not sure of the area, we might have it on-
Does it go up to where the houses are?
There is a small buffer, I believe.
Okay.
It goes up to Hill Press Drive.
Okay.
There's a small parcel in here.
Okay.
And actually, I think there is a thin strip that separates them, but yeah, it goes right up.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments?
Yeah, we're not going to get too much technical, but just, just so I understand, because everything else I do, so if it does get overwhelmed, it is still going to miss the previous project to the east, right?
Correct.
It's not going to add to it.
Right, right.
Okay, that's it.
Does anybody else have any questions for this project?
Conservation issued order of conditions and they're going to be recorded and followed, so.
Okay. So the other thing I want to mention is, the Stormwater Committee will not be doing the number of site visits that it usually does. We may have onsite visits, depending upon what the town engineer finds. There will be inspections done, there will, projects that have not officially broken ground yet but are in the process of going through approval. The town engineer, Weston and Sampson, will be responsible for that. But again, this will be handled by the Planning Board. And I know Lisa will be out, so that anything comes down that the Stormwater Committee needs to be involved in and requires a site visit, then we would do it. But we will not be doing routine site visits like we used to when we had a stormwater agent. So, that'll all go through planning and our CONCOM, okay? Any questions? All right, I guess you're all set, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
The next one, 6B, is Belle Farms. Before you start, Bob Rego, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, sorry, I had to unmute this.
And James Pearson, are you on?
Yes, I'm here, Nancy.
Okay, very good, thank you. Is there anybody else on that you can see, Tom?
Oh, yeah, that was, that was it.
There's two on, okay, if you just keep an eye on that in case anybody else comes on. Okay, so the next presentation, as I said, is Belle Farms, and you saw what was presented by Tom for his project, so go ahead.
Good afternoon, for the record, Chris Vandenberg, a compliance consultant.
What, give your name?
Chris Vandenberg.
Okay.
So yeah, we're also going through process of planning board and conservation. We are on objective for a plan, as a matter of fact, for a planning board. So per review, proposal for a 26-lot subdivision with access off of Council Oak Lane. Late to stormwater, but the stormwater site is closely mitigated through the use of two infiltration basins, approximately halfway to the site, maybe about two-thirds of the site. Stormwater is collected via the pavements, so the majority of the runoff and some of the roots is going to be collected via the use of these two infiltration basins. Test bits were conducted out there to make sure we have adequate groundwater separation. Stormwater outflow, I believe, infiltration basin water is designed to outflow. I believe that actually is designed to have no outflow, as a matter of fact. With basin two having a little bit of outflow flowing to the area of freshwater women here. Stormwater flows, if anything, outflows and be flowing to this pond, which is going to have a proposed culvert to be tied into the road there.
What are the green areas here and there?
Here?
Yeah.
So yeah, this is, so this will represent the manicured lawn area for the proposed subdivision. The darker green represents maintaining the wooded vegetation.
Okay, so within the, I'll call it, the half circle there, all those green spots, yeah, where you are?
Yep, these are representative of the wetland areas.
Okay, and that'll be natural vegetation?
Yep, so like wetland vegetation, but it's lighter green, this darker green that you see everywhere, that's just remains out with dense vegetation, that's remain untouched. This would be like the manicured lawns, this type of area.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
There is a cross culvert there halfway, no, down, closer to you. Yeah, right there.
Yep, I believe.
Connect those two.
No.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, proposing box cover there.
What, what size?
I think it's going to be 18-foot wide box cover.
Damn it.
Not like a job, a three-sided box cover with an open bottom, it's going to be 18 feet wide.
Right. Good. Oh, I mean, trapped.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Lisa, do you have anything on conservation?
None at this time, we're in the middle of reviewing it. Weston and Sampson just submitted their last phase review, I haven't looked at it yet.
Anybody have anything else? Anybody in the audience, if you have any questions on these projects, just put your hand up. If not, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next project is Agenda Item 6C, Almeida Ridge.
For the record, my name is Bob Rego, I'm with Riverhawk Environmental, can, can everybody see me and hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we can.
Is there a way to share my screen, or should I just tell you about the project? I'm, I'm sorry, is it okay to share my screen?
If you know how to do it.
Yeah, I, I, you'd have to approve it, I have to send a request. I, I can, I can just talk about it, would have been maybe a little clearer without it, but I can give you a quick overview, and if you guys need to share it, I'll-
Okay, well, first question, where were you with planning and CONCOM?
We received approval from both. We have an order of conditions from conservation and we have approval of the planning board. We have not received a decision, but we've been through the final meeting and they voted to approve the subdivision.
Okay, so give us the street location and the number of units, please.
Okay, the, the project is located off William Street. The name of the subdivision is Almeida Ridge, and it's 17 lots. I'm not sure of the total acreage, but it's a fair, it's like 80 acres, it's permitted under the conservation bylaw. So there's a bunch of open space that will be, that will be set aside beyond the 17 lots. Where basically this subdivision was designed to manage the stormwater in accordance with the Mass D E P Stormwater Management Standards, the DITN planning regs, and the conservation regulations. It was fully reviewed for both conservation and planning by Weston and Sampson. And it's, it's basically a typical subdivision in that we're proposing to collect the water from the, the roadways and catch basins and convey it through piping to one of two infiltration basins. They've been, both basins have been designed to meet groundwater separation, to handle the flow from the 100-year storm and to, to meet the rest of the treatment requirements of the Mass D E P Stormwater Management Standards. The only other stormwater feature is each of the proposed dwellings will have an onsite dry well to, to infiltrate the clean roof water runoff, or roof runoff from the, from each dwelling on the, on the each lot. And that's basically it.
Does the street, the entrance off of William Street, is it a loop or does it exit somewhere else?
It's, it's a single entrance.
Okay.
It's one road that just is, goes down a cul-de-sac, so it's just a single entrance. And at the entrance, there was a comment, I believe from the Highway Department, about a culvert across the front entrance to pick up some flow from the northerly abutting properties. So, so we did incorporate a culvert underneath the front of the road to, to existing wetland system that's on the, on the northern part of the parcel near the entrance.
Okay, any questions from the committee members? Lisa, anything from CONCOM? You're all set. Tom, do you have anything?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay, you're all set, anybody in the audience? Nope. We got an audience, but not, not from that neighborhood, so you're all set, Bob.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. The next one is 6T, Shaw's Boatyard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. Brad Holmes with ECR, on behalf of Shaw's Boatyard.
Florian Bog.
Robert Manjin.
Corwin Lawson.
The Boatyard are here, we've submitted a application, this writes up, for a boat storage building at the Shaw's Boatyard. As you know, the property, there's marine offices and storage leading up to here with additional boat storage areas to support the existing marina. What we've done is we've submitted an application to put a new boat storage building on the property in that northern portion. Right here, further away from the, the marina portion. This occurs with an existing degraded areas, which is pavement, asphalt, boat storage, whatnot. This building is proposed here, which will include a new stormwater management system to process that new building along with some of the other impervious areas of the site. We are under conservation review, we're also under review with Weston Sampson, which is in progress. We haven't received a report from them to be able to respond and coordinate. But this, as we discussed by email, was, the purpose of this meeting today was more of an introductory meeting, because we don't have review from the Conservation Commission, it's just to present to the board and take any comments you have, and then we'll be coming back once we have climbed through conservation.
Okay, where is Main Street on either of those? I guess the first one's probably the best one. So the Main Street, that's the main entrance, right?
Correct.
This is the overall site, here's Cobb's Lane here.
H3D is here.
Right here.
Oh, okay.
Cobb's Lane is here.
Yeah.
Cobb's Lane is closed, we have it located there for security.
Any questions from the committee members?
Not at this time.
No, it's early because they're still in the process, yes.
Initial question. Alternatives to sliding it within a 50-foot no build?
Speak up, so that Mike will pick it up.
Haven't even looked at alternatives to keeping it in the 50-foot no build.
We can discuss that, this is obviously new. This is a previously developed site. So there is no vegetated buffer here that we're trying to protect. Yeah, I know you're familiar with the site, so, you know, to keep it undisturbed, I, obviously, the no build, the no touch buffers are intended for, you know, vegetated areas and undisturbed areas, this is not that case.
So maybe some mitigation of some sort, I don't think.
Sure, we can look at that. We figured that once we have a review from Weston Sampson and comments from you-
Yeah, it came in today, I just haven't had a chance to pour it.
Okay. Yeah, and this is the, yeah, we're up for, if we can, we are mitigating in the sense that there's a lot of, it's on the plans, a lot of the material that's in this area is coming out along with the stormwater basin, we wouldn't be opposed to adding some additional plantings.
How much land do you own, is that the broken line I'm seeing at the top, or do you go beyond that?
There are multiple lots, Cobb's Wharf, Reed's Wharf.
Okay, but going, where's your north arrow? Okay, so going north, do you-
That's it.
The, the broken line at the top?
This is the top, yeah.
Okay.
And then we have Mr. Wayne LaPage, and it's us.
Okay, are those docks that I'm looking at that go out this way with cross pieces?
Yes.
Okay.
That's marina.
Okay, what, when, when this is all done, roughly, how many acres are you?
We're pretty rough, 74 by 100 building.
No, but I mean-
Oh.
There's no change in the, they're not purchasing new land or-
No, just to-
Having the redeveloping within the footprint of this existing park.
Right, we still have boats here now, around the circle.
Okay.
Done that way forever.
Yeah.
Also, within inside the circle, we always maintain the access for fire apparatus and-
Yeah.
Having the building there just replaces same space, boats will be inside versus outside, and, I'm sorry.
Yes, no change.
No change.
Boat's going from outside.
I know that we did size it to your point, we did size it for the lot lines for our neighbor, you know, it's what we had for available space, that's why we had picked that dimension, and we worked on it for quite a while.
Okay, any questions from committee members? Tom?
So this would, this whole project could have fallen into conservation for the stormwater component?
No, stormwater would fall under planning, because it's a commercial site.
Well, we still have to comply with the stormwater of the DEP.
Yeah, but as far as local.
Okay.
Yeah, did you already file for planning board?
I, we have, I haven't yet, no.
Yeah, you guys need to.
Well, right, this is our first step to go through conservation.
Yeah, right, what we've been trying to do is have advocates follow my campaign to vote, so like you're getting the same review from Weston and, you know, Weston and Sampson.
And I think they're doing that as part of their, the fees that were paid, yeah, that's-
Okay.
Right, thanks Snyder, Dave DeBignan, like, the engineering, that fee has been paid, I believe they're doing that review as part of that as well.
Okay, good.
All set? James Pearson, I know you're going to give us a little rundown, do you have any questions for anybody here on this project?
No, I do not at this time. Yeah, we, we've, I've assisted with the Conservation Commission review, and we've also been doing the, the review for the planning board, so we've, we've kind of gotten through doing those, and, so, I, I guess, I guess I would say that as far as technical comments, we didn't have a lot of real major issues that we really found with the application up to this point, so there, there were, there are a few comments, but I don't think it's going to be anything that's going to be really, really earthshaking, so that's about all I have to-
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any comments, questions? If not, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again.
Okay. Under, under item six, these presentations. I have an email from Jim Reid, and it was dated August the 7th. James, do you have a copy of that? I had asked him, I told him we invited these four projects to the meeting. I asked if you, Weston and Sampson, would like to comment on anything. So, he listed four bullet points at the top, do you have that?
Okay, what date was that email again?
He wrote to me on August the 7th. And it starts out, "Good afternoon, Nancy, we have a few updates."
Great, I'm just-
Yeah, and he said that you would be available today.
Oh, okay, you're talking about the one from Jim?
Yeah, Jim Reid, and it starts out just for Belle.
Yep, yep, okay.
So if you'd like to comment on that, since we're talking about these projects.
Yeah, happy to do it. So, so Belle, we did our second peer review letter of that one for the planning board around July 28th, and we were awaiting a response. It looks like there's been a little bit of email traffic with the planning board just the last few days. So there are some issues kind of being kicked around a little bit. Nothing really stormwater related, it mainly has to do with availability of, of public water supply for future homes in the subdivision. And so that's really kind of where that stands, we're, we're kind of in, in limbo on that right now with the planning board review. Did you want me to go on and talk about the three other projects that were in that email?
Yes, yeah, please.
So then there was, there was the Almeida project. We were still waiting for an updated stormwater analysis to, to, to go along with the ASBILs that were submitted. So we do have ASBIL plans, and we had reviewed those, we had identified that there were some differences between the ASBIL plans and the original approved plans, and so we had asked for a stormwater analysis to be provided that showed that with these changes to the project that it still meets the original intent of the approved plan, and so we just still haven't seen that stormwater analysis yet, and we were just kind of waiting for that. And that's been, that's been something we've-
Okay. James, just a minute, what did you say?
I'm confused, is this a Rujo, he said Almeida, I think he's talking about Almeida.
No, no, the email I sent to Jim Reid said-
This is the ASBILs for Almeida.
Okay, so, maybe he did mean MACS.
Okay, I might, I might be, some of these projects seem like they go by multiple names, so I might be transposing that a little bit, but-
No, that's what, you're reading what Jim wrote, and that's what I'm mentioning, but Lisa is saying there aren't any ASBILs, and the stormwater is what we're waiting for, MACS, which is the Rujo solar farm.
Yes.
Almeida's has not been built yet, that was what Bob was presenting on.
Okay, but he didn't write this memo, so, all right, so, for the record, on this one, Heather, just cross out with it, the reference that was just given, the report from James Pearson, in effect is for MACS, which is the solar farm behind Almeida. Okay, it's that, the comment is not on Almeida.
Yes, correct.
So the next one is Eamon.
Right, yes, so it sounded as though that project's been approved by the planning board. We had issued a few comments on that, I think that they must have worked through those with the board. So I, I don't, I don't think we're being asked for any further review at this time.
I can, can I speak on that?
Yes, go ahead.
The Conservation Commission did look at some of the storm, well, all the stormwater comments, and, oh, I'm sorry, I'm confusing them now, too. To Almeida, let's talk about it. No, as far as Almeida Street, we, we did approve it as is, yeah, the conditions.
Okay, so, okay, so, has Weston and Sampson been contacted, anything relative to the Shaw's Boatyard project?
Yeah, the Shaw's Boatyard project, that one, we actually just finished reviewing, and we had just issued comments to the Conservation Commission, and we also did a review for the planning board. We, we made- We, we may have already issued those comments to them too. I, I, I'd have to double check and see if Jim Reid and sent those out, but, uh, I believe he may have.
I just gave Nancy a copy.
Okay, yeah, so, um, I have, um. Belle, I'm halfway through that one. I didn't have any questions, um, and I do have.
This is a new Belle one. This came out yesterday.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, very good. And I do have Shaw's here, so thank you very much. Is so, uh, getting back to Almeida, James, is there anything to report on Almeida? This is the, uh, the seventeen lot development off of Williams Street. This is the one that Bob Rego spoke about.
Right, yes. Yeah, we, um. We, we haven't recently done any further review on that one, so we don't have anything new to report.
Okay.
I have something.
Go ahead, Lisa.
This is the one I wanted to speak about. Um, the Conservation Commission approved it with conditions. Um, and one of the conditions is that there is a, um, oversight by Weston and Sampson for construction period supervising. Considering that I believe they still maybe needed some test kits and things like that as well, but.
So that would be additional, additional proposal from Weston and Sampson. Uh, James, the other thing is, if you heard me make the comment about the Stormwater Committee not going out and doing site inspections like we did when we had a stormwater agent. We depend on you. Yeah, Weston and Sampson will be asked to submit proposals to do those kinds of inspections during construction on these projects. Obviously, we can't just let it go because we don't have a stormwater agent. So just a heads up, there's more work headed your way at the expense of the project, uh, so. So that.
Understood.
Okay.
Did you hear what I said? Because Tom brought this over after the fact.
No, I heard what you said, yeah. You, you mentioned that you were gonna be looking for construction phase inspection services for Almeida.
Yes.
Yeah, so add the list, uh, Belle Farms and Shaw's Boat Yard, uh, once they, once they start, uh. So that would be, so your work at, any work on Eamon is, that's done right now as far as, oh, no, they haven't built a building, have they?
No.
Oh, so there may be additional work that has to be done relative to inspections, uh, there. But, um, I'll check with the planning board because they'll be the ones making the request. And the main concern of the Stormwater Committee is obviously, um, the work that Weston and Sampson does on all these projects. Because you're the town engineer, uh, will cover all phases, meaning planning board, conservation, and stormwater issues.
Okay.
All right, and, and would be copied so that we know, uh, if there are findings, if, if in fact something happens that, that we should have a site visit for. You know, like if we get the hundred-year rainstorm and the hill washes away or something else, wherever it is. So that's, I think that's everything we had on those. Are there any, while we have James on the, on the screen, is there anything else, um, that needs to be, uh, brought up? James, do you have a phone number for Joris Schwartz? She's the engineer who's doing our, um, stormwater review, and, uh, I think she goes, she called in. I didn't get the call. She hasn't called back on Tom's phone, but if you have a phone number, we can call her. Um, I think she's away on vacation, but if you have her cell phone, uh, we'll try to reach her.
Yeah, it looks like she'll be returning, um, on August twenty-fifth from vacation, but, uh. If you, uh, if you want to reach her, her, her desk number, I can give it to you now if you want. It's, uh, nine, seven, eight, five, seven, three, four, one, three, six.
Nine, seven, eight, five, seven, three, four, one, three, six.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, uh. Is there anything else on the agenda that you want to comment on, James?
I, uh, I don't have any comments on other ends at this time.
Okay, I got a request. This is for everybody. Uh, I'm still asking for photos for the calendar for twenty-twenty-six. As long as it's a something in Dayton, uh, it can be, um, animals, farm animals, wild animals. The, the only rule we have is rules. Number one, it must be in Dayton. Doesn't have to be this year, uh, no buildings and no people. So, uh, if in your travels around Dayton, I know we have, we down Brook Street, but I don't think we want to put that on a calendar. If you have any, if you happen to look and see anything, uh, it can be woodlot, it can be hay fields. Can be a stream. I, last year we had a, uh, vernal pool, uh, that was photographed up at, um, MACS Arujos. So anything like that, as long as, and then you can email it to me, and all I need to know is, uh, where it is and who took the picture. Okay? And we'll give you credit if you send anything. We all set with, uh, James?
Yep.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care.
Okay, bye-bye. Tom, did you get that phone number? You want to try reaching her? You may have to leave a message.
Do you want me to try?
Yeah.
Yes, the desk number, and, and looking back at the email, she's offered to come next month's meeting for our government.
Yeah, this was supposed to be the intro that we asked for.
Right. Nine, seven, eight, nine, seven, three, four, one, three, six.
Yeah, I want to see, uh, if that's the number that, uh, came in here. I got a feeling it was. Tom, while you're waiting for me to look that up, would you, uh, I'm gonna go back to Foray. You want to give us a update on the Main Street reconstruction project, please?
Well, it's, it's coming along. Uh, we have some challenges with the hill, but, um, we're just over the crest of the biggest pile of hill there.
The far end of Main Street?
Yep, we're above Yelson's property. We're above that. It's coming along slowly.
So is the, did the drainage start at Williams and go east, or did it start on Main and go west? Well, it's intermittent in a couple of places. Okay.
It goes several different directions. The original drainage system remains in place. We're just adding where we hadn't occurred from the most by, and updating it. Uh, a treatment on the outflows at the actual water bodies.
Are we gonna benefit from that supplemental budget with extra chapter ninety money?
That's what's paying for materials now. You, you're not talking about copper money. You're talking about get, uh.
Oh, I'm talking about the governor just got a supplemental budget. I sent out an email from MMA.
It's already in our, it's already in our account.
Oh.
I, I have not.
I know some of, I happened to see a copy of the Rehoboth reporter, and, uh, there was an article about money that Rehoboth's got extra money and Seacock got extra money, and I was wondering.
We, we have it in our state level.
Okay.
And sixty-five miles of road, we need to tend to that.
Right, right, but we are gonna get over and above the initial chapter ninety money?
Yes.
Okay, it's always good to hear our taxpayers' money comes back here.
It doesn't change Main Street, but it helps.
Tom, write this number down. Nine, seven, eight.
Yep.
Seven, six, four, eight, four, zero, two.
Nine, seven, eight, like the other one.
Yeah, nine, seven, eight, eight, seven, six, four. Wait a minute, that's too many numbers.
So when you want me to call?
Wait a minute. Nine, seven, eight, seven, six, four, eight, four, zero, two. Try that one first. Because she, she may have called in. Okay.
Uh, this is Tom. This is Joris, yes. Is now a good time? Oh, okay. Loudly, I'm on speakerphone, okay? So Joris is on the line. She's walking to a quieter place, um, thanks.
Hi, Joris.
Do you hear me okay, or do you hear, I apologize, there's like a lot of background noise.
Everybody here?
You're hearing any of the background noise?
Okay, we can hear you. Uh, this is Agenda Item Five A, and this is a, um, a brief update on the progress review that Weston and Sampson is doing for the town relative to the stormwater program, the testing and all that other stuff.
Yeah, no, thanks everyone for having me. Again, if you can't hear me at any time, just let me know, and I'll try to, try to move a little bit, see if I can get a better spot. But yeah, I mean, there were three different tasks that we've been working on within town, um, and these were tasks that we identified as priorities. These are items that are kind of on EP's radar or related to, you know, compliance concerns. And the first task was developing kind of a implementation plan, so looking at kind of all of the permit requirements, looking at the status of the town's compliance and work that's been done to date and work that's remaining for compliance. Um, so it was one of the tasks. The second task was doing a, uh, regulatory review. So we're doing all of your existing regulations that include, um, you know, stormwater requirements, um, and again, trying to ensure that you're fully compliant with the post-construction and construction stormwater requirements of the MS four permit. Um, the deliverable for that task essentially is kind of a memo that summarizes each requirement, where the town currently satisfies that requirement, and then if not, recommendations on where language should be added to existing regulations to meet that requirement. The third task was, um, fieldwork related to mapping of your outfalls and doing some dry weather outfall screening, so sampling where we observed, um, flow during, um, dry weather. So those were kind of the three main tasks. We do have kind of drafts of each deliverable. I haven't finished my review of every deliverable yet, so I apologize because I haven't got Nancy and Tom deliverables for all three tasks yet. The main task that we did produce in the liberal lot to date was the, uh, was the outfall mapping, um, and sampling effort. So I know Nancy, I had sent you and Tom that, that report, and now I'm gonna follow up. I know it's easier probably, like I said, to review a hard copy of that report, so I'll be following up with a hard copy of that report. But the mapping exercise basically focused on, um, kind of the urbanized portions of the town that are regulated under this permit. So basically, you know, out there walking each street, um, and trying to, you know, identify, um, outfall locations, which I know Tom also provided assistance with, which we appreciated. Uh, and so we were able to map, um, seventy-nine outfalls, um, and then screen those outfalls during dry weather. And we only had three outfalls that were actually flowing, which is a small number, which is, which is good, and kind of speaks to, you know, um, positive impact in terms of less likely to have, uh, you know, an illicit discharge. Normally, we're seeing a lot of flow, and that's not always a negative of an illicit discharge. Obviously, we're not seeing any flow that's positive. That means that hopefully non-stormwater discharges aren't getting into the drainage system. And, and of the sampling that we did do, none of that tested positive for, um, you know, fully needing the likely sewer input parameters of the permit. So that's also really good news, and hopefully that'll help to streamline efforts going forward when there's follow-up fieldwork that's done. So the dry weather outfall screening is kind of the first piece. You're sampling at the outfall, but then you need to go up into each system and do what's called catch for investigations, opening up manholes, again, trying to isolate dry weather flow, um, and looking for any non-stormwater discharges getting into the drainage system. So that, like I said, that exercise is done. Um, we have the memo drafted for the regulatory review. I'm kind of just giving it my final review. It's taking me a little longer to get through it than I anticipated. Um, and then the last piece again is that implementation plan, which again, highlights a path going forward for compliance for anything that's still kind of outstanding, and I think that's helpful too, because based on the, you know, the fieldwork we've done to date, we know we've kind of streamlined things in terms of, you know, future dry weather outfall screening efforts that are needed. There's still, there is still some streets we weren't able to visit under the current budget that we had available within the contract. Um, so there's a little bit more work to do for outfall mapping as well. Uh, and then of course, mapping a lot of other additional, you know, drainage discharges that fully need the permit requirements. But I think, you know, overall, actually, we've made, made some good progress. I know Nancy, we talked about, you know, kind of priority, prioritizing items kind of going forward, um, based on the, you know, kind of the audit that we're doing and thinking about, you know, if the town would have the ability to kind of keep, keep moving this work forward each year and trying to have an MS four compliance budget kind of going forward. And I know a lot, I know Nancy does a lot to kind of help the town with these requirements as well, which is great, but anything, you know, that you wouldn't be able to kind of handle in-house where you need outside support. We're coming up on the end of, so we finished, permit year seven ended in June, June thirtieth. Annual reports are going to be due soon. Those are due September, um, twenty-ninth to EPA. Um, I know Nancy usually takes the lead up preparing those reports, and obviously Nancy, you have some information based on the work that we've done for you and who did that report. We're happy to um, review that report with you as well and help, help in any way we can. And I guess the last thing I was gonna say too is I did get an update. I had a call with Newt Tetter last week. He kind of just had an update, you know, a draft permit did come out for public comment last fall, and he is saying that that permit should be final in the next six months. So, um, so I was kind of surprised to hear that. I knew, um, just because historically it's taken EPA a little bit longer to kind of get permits to the, to the finish line, and there's been so much kind of other changes going on in the background with a new administration. So I wasn't sure what that path was gonna look like, but, but on this call, he did say that new permit is expected to come out in the next six months, and it'll be interesting to see what that looked like. I mean, there was a lot of items in that permit that were, you know, very costly for communities to implement, and I know there was a lot of commentary on those particular items in the draft, and so it'll be interesting to see if some of those items are modified. You know, as part of the final permit and what that, you know, what that looks like for the town kind of going forward.
Okay.
My kind of, kind of high-level overview. Um, but I know Nancy, we talked about having a meeting. We come in person for the September meeting, um, so we could do, we'd be a deeper dive on some of these items. You know, and we should be kind of finalized by that point with these items and have them to, the rest of them to use for review in advance of that meeting.
Okay, I think what we're gonna do is, um, when you have the the reports, uh, draft reports done, and you send them in, um, we'll share them with the Stormwater Committee and, uh, I'll ask for comments from the committee that, items that we could bring back, um, to you. We may not have you come in for the September meeting. It's gonna depend on what kind of feedback I get. Um, obviously, Tom and I will be going through the reports, and probably that's where most of the questions or comments will come from. But, um, I think we're gonna wait for you to send in something, uh, you know, additional, uh, but, um. I did look at the report, um, I thought, I thought the outfall, outfall map was really interesting. And all I could think of was, gee, we're not gonna use Tom's handwritten, hand-drawn outfall maps anymore. But it doesn't look like you found a lot of outfalls that he didn't have. I mean, they seem to go pretty closely.
Seventy-nine's a lot. It's more than I expected.
Please, it's more than seventy-nine, yeah. Um, if, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
On what you just said, I think it would be beneficial sometime in September regardless, that the three of us meet. You, me, and Joris, because there's probably gonna be more interaction on a level, and then, and when it's free to put the Stormwater Committee.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, Joris, did you hear, Tom?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Tom. I heard you say that, that having a meeting with you and Nancy, and yes, absolutely, definitely to be better.
Yeah, and, um, I will add that, that the town administrator, uh, wants to sit in on a meeting, because this will be the first, uh, I'll call it draft report. Uh, he wasn't here, obviously, when the proposal was written. It was Mike Mullin that put it all together, so he's familiar with the proposal.
He hasn't baptized its form one.
No, no. So anyhow, um, that's what we'll plan to do after we get your, your next written report. Share it with the committee and the town administrator, and then, uh, you, Tom, the town administrator, and I will sit down and. the town administrator, and I will sit down and come up with a list of comments or questions or whatever.
I have like five questions, but I, I realize this is just an overview.
Yeah.
In a nutshell, Jerice, is there something I need to, my department needs to act on now before we meet?
Is there anything your department needs to act on before we meet? I don't think so.
Okay, I saw some comments.
At a high level, it highlighted just some of our general findings, but I don't think, you know, other than, you know, I mean, there's some cleaning of outfalls that's needed. There were structural concerns, you know, separate items from, I guess, the immediate needs of the permit, you know, just speed for consideration too. So I guess just thinking about some of those outfall cleaning, obviously concerns about flooding, you know, those outfalls aren't
Yeah, those.
Are obstructed.
Right, the two that you commented on, obstructed, those are abandoned, that's why they're extracted.
Oh, okay, all right, well, that's good to know.
It's redirected.
So stuff like that is super helpful.
I was more concerned with that information. Yeah, I was more concerned about the testimony then, you found fecal col, fecal coliform and stuff like that. Is that something I got to track now?
I know it's not uncommon, but you didn't hit on the other parameters as well, which is like the, you know, like the surfactants and the ammonia. And usually it's all in those parameters exceeding certain thresholds to indicate likely sewer input. But the bacteria, I feel like, is, is, is so common in so many, you know, communities, it could be anything.
So that, that can wait then, until we meet, right?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. But yeah, no, that'd be great to know about the, like I said, the abandoned outfalls. Because we also want to make sure that's going to streamline the level of effort needed going forward for, obviously, those outfalls are abandoned, we don't need to do any additional mapping in those catchment areas or any investigations or, you know, we can take those off our radar too, so that kind of, you know, anything like that will, you know, reduce the kind of level of effort going forward.
Right, okay, thank you.
Jerice, I did give a copy of your report to the town administrator. And I told him that I had looked at, I had read it over, and that I was going to be talking to Tom about it. But I said, my impression is, number one, there are no major findings that require immediate action, such as illicit discharges. None were found, from what I could see. Of course, the report had the pictures, two pictures of the pipes in the comments, which Tom just addressed. So I said to him, when we get the next report, I'll let you know. But I said, the good news is, from what I can see, we don't have any, anything that's, which Tom, similar to what Tom just said, we don't have anything that requires immediate action, crisis time, or anything else. I felt, as a matter, I felt pretty good about the report when I saw it, considering this is the first time the, everything is, this whole program has been looked at by engineers. So I think it looked pretty good.
Yeah, no, I mean, the fact that you only had so few outfalls with flow, that's, you know, you should be seeing a lot more than that. And sometimes it's not because it's, you know, like groundwater, but that we're kind of chasing and testing and spending money testing stuff that's not, you know, related to an illicit discharge because it is flow. So I was glad that we didn't have to, you know, spend funds in that way, and that allowed us to do some more mapping, which was nice.
Yeah, and the other thing too is the pollutants that you mentioned were, were, and still are, the major pollutants that we report for the major water bodies, the Taunton River, the Segreganset, and Three Mile, and Sunken Brook. I did have a question on, you mentioned Broad Cove. When I look at Broad Cove, I consider that part of the Taunton River. So, we haven't segregated Broad Cove as a separate area. And I didn't know if that's something that we're supposed to do. Because it's not, it's not per se a waterway.
It is, it is, it is a separate waterway. We have, we have outflows going into it, fish and wildlife identifies as a separate waterway, DEP also.
But I think the thing is, what I'm saying is, when we, the person who helped us identify the bodies of water was Bill Napolitano from Serpent. And because he gave us the data on what the pollutants were, which is basically subject waste. But in any case, that was just something that I noticed because it was, it didn't appear on what we report. Is that something we should now list on our waterways, Jerice? Broad Cove?
Nancy, you're just breaking up a little bit there. All right, Tom, I can hear you a little bit better. I was wondering if the question, if my phone might be closer.
It's because you're closer than me.
Tip of the phone, maybe.
The speakerphone, yeah. So, she's asking about Broad Cove. Should we be identifying it now with our MS4 reporting as a separate waterway? Do that in the future as an identity?
So this is, so you're saying is it not, I guess, it wasn't previously identified in the permit?
Yeah, we, we identified it as part of the Taunton River is what she's saying before.
Oh, okay. Let me look at that, because let me look at how it's included on the 303D list.
I'm, I'm thinking we keep status quo until we actually make a change.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe better to correct it as, you know, if there's any correction needed as part of the next permit, because you're going to have to submit a notice of intent again and list all your receiving waters and the outfalls and discharges to those receiving waters.
Okay, and I think what the, what you said you were going to look at, that list, I believe that's the list that Bill Napolitano from Serpent gave us way back, oh, years ago, when we were trying to identify the major water bodies and what their pollutants were. Okay, so it, it won't be in the MS4 this year, we're going to keep the ones that we've been reporting?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, if there is, if there's new impairments that have come up, then we need to include those as part of your annual report this year. And if there are new, yeah, I mean, if there are new waterways that you discharged to that previously didn't identify as having a discharge to, then that should be corrected in like your stormwater management, which I realize Nancy, we have, I think, your hard copy of.
Yeah.
So it's another thing, I was thinking when I meet you in person, I'll return that to you as well. Because a lot of that information was helpful when we were doing, preparing kind of the implementation plan. So we should, we should update the stormwater management plan to reflect that information, but then we'll also be, I guess, you know, corrected and updated as part of the next NOI filing.
Okay, so it won't be listed on this, the MS4 for the one that ended June thirtieth. And the other thing is that Save the Bay periodically sends people out, and they've done testing at Broad Cove. So that's just something else to, to keep in mind.
Okay, well, I guess going back to, so the sampling that we did do this go around those, and the screening, we're going to have you include one of the tables related to that effort with your annual report. So you will submit that information.
Okay.
EPA does ask for that information, but we can talk about that before, before you, you know, you file the report. But assumably, there'll probably end up just being a couple of the tables that we included in the report that you'll include as separate attachments with your, your email to EPA. But the thing you ask in the annual report, that you ask if other testing is being done, sometimes they do ask if you can submit that as well.
Yeah, I saw that.
Just trying to get access to any information that would be available for sampling.
Right, I saw that, and then I saw the last table in your report. You can't read it, the print's so small.
I know, I know, I'll do, we'll do better when I send you those hard copies, I'll make that bigger.
Okay.
So those are more legible, I apologize for that. Yeah.
I, I did it on eight and a half by fourteen and using landscape, and I still could not read it, so anyhow.
We'll do it on a seventeen, I'll make sure it's legible before I put it in the mouth here.
Okay, I think, I think I told you that when we were preparing the budget, you gave us a list of recommendations with potential cost estimates. We did select the, it was the testing, Tom? Was it testing? And it was roughly fifteen thousand dollars, and we did get that approved at town meeting. So for the year we're in now, we do have some stormwater testing money, and I, I believe it was fifteen thousand. Obviously, the list is lengthy, but money is very tight in this town.
Yeah.
So, so.
I think it's pending if it's required, because I'm not sure if as region is required.
Yeah, well, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it, but at least we've got money if we have to do something.
We're banking on her to identify if we're required to or not.
Okay, as far as the new permit
Yeah.
coming out in about six months. I remember the previous permit was due out, and was due out, and was due out, and five years later, it finally came out.
I know, that's why it was surprising. And it's funny, in this call, I actually was on a call related to a community that kind of is behind on a bunch of stuff. And so they were, we were having a meeting with EPA to figure out how to get them caught up. And we would offer that information, and it was funny because I was curious about the status, but I didn't even ask him that question. He just said, we're expecting the new permit to be out within the next six months. And I, I agree with you a hundred percent, given the timeline that we've seen in the past. It was kind of shocking to hear him say that with such a quick kind of turnaround. But so it'll be interesting to see if that actually materializes. But he, you know, I can imagine he would offer that information if he didn't think that that was going to happen, you know?
The reason I remember it is because I was on a committee at Mass Municipal Association, a policy committee on energy and the environment. And on the, the, a letter came out from EPA, signed by Thelma Murphy, and stating that we were all set, and I happened to mention it at a meeting, and they said, you couldn't possibly have that, they haven't approved any. I says, we, we got a letter of approval. I mean, I'm looking at the letter, and they're telling me it didn't come out, but we did have the letter. But that's why I remembered it was, it took so long, so. Okay, does anybody on the committee have any questions?
None at this time.
None? Off set, Lisa?
Off set, yeah, thank you for the information.
Okay, Jerice, we'll let you go.
Okay.
Enjoy the.
Thank you guys so much, I apologize that I'm not there in person or.
Well, no, we appreciate you being available.
Nancy and Tom, I'll definitely be in touch with you both next week.
Okay.
Very good, thank you, enjoy.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you, okay.
Bye. Do we have any unanticipated items? Does anybody have anything? Public input, Mrs. Postale?
No, I was just wondering if I'm, I'm doing the unanticipated, if something was going to come up.
No. Correspondence, not really correspondence, I just want you to know, I did place an order for six hundred calendars, based on the estimate they gave me. I had trouble submitting it electronically, so I actually printed it, and I mailed a copy to Mr. Caballo at the school. And I'll follow up with him when school opens. But, so that's done, and we have the money to cover it incumbent.
So you have enough photos or no?
I'm still looking for photos. But I need them soon.
That's what I thought.
I actually have. I sent one to Tom and Heather. Last, was it Thursday night that storm front came through? And the sky got very dark, and it rained for a while. That was the one I sent to you. I was able to lighten up, that was an interesting picture. And the thing is, the dog is standing on the deck looking as if to say, you know how animals respond to weather changes, especially bad weather? And, and the dog is, is, he's just there, looking, you know? I got three pictures today from the town clerk that we're taking somewhere, taking somewhere on Elm Street. Beautiful blue skies, one was a hayfield with woods and stuff, but they were, I'll call them nature scenes. Still waiting for the Aggie School, got to remind him, and Paul Reynolds is supposed to send something to me. So if anybody's got others, I'm just putting them all in a file, and I've got some left over from last year. I found one I took. Broad Cove Nature Trail. It's a giant beehive, you know, the ones that make those gray things that are?
Is it wasps?
Wasps, yeah.
It's huge, and the day we went down there, we walked down to look at the property that's fenced off. That was the whole purpose of the, of the walk. But I got a picture of this beautiful beehive. I think it was up high because I don't think we'd want to disturb the neighbors. The next thing is the minutes for June the eighteenth, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both unanimous. Let me just look at the meeting date. Oh, my calendar says that's Citizen, Citizenship Day. Okay, that looks okay. Does anybody have anything they want to bring up? Potential agenda items or anything? If not, I'll understand a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at two. What's that number, is it twelve?
Ten.
Two ten, yeah. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.